Good morning. I call to order the November 19th, 2019, meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. And welcome to all of our visitors today. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wiese?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum as presented. All of those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, the motion does carry. Item number two.
Disaster relief determination with Shawn Robertson, county appraiser.
Good morning, Shawn.
Good morning. You have in front of you a disaster relief determination. A little bit of history on this, I think we've been over it before, but it doesn't happen all that often. But prior to 2012, if someone's home was destroyed after January 1st, they still owed the entire year's worth of taxes. But beginning in 2012, the taxpayer can apply directly to the commissioners for an abatement or a credit of taxes if the property was occupied as a residence, it was damaged by earthquake, flood, tornado, fire, storm, and it was substantially destroyed, which is determined to be more than 50% of the value. In making this determination, commissioners are given substantial leeway. You can abate the entire year's taxes, deny an abatement, credit future year's taxes, or anything in between. In working with Mike Montoya on this when it first started several years ago, we had kind of determined that the most equitable solution is to abate taxes for the structure portion, since the damage doesn't affect land value, of the parcel for the period that it wasn't usable as a residence. In this case, 430 East Cloud, we had a tree fall onto a house due to a storm on May 26th. It was substantially destroyed, and then later in the year, pretty recently, they just demolished the house. The parcel as it sits now is essentially a vacant lot. There's a small carport and a shed on it at the moment, but no house, no garage. So, if you look at the bottom part of your sheet, the 2019 appraised value in total is $80,500. The land, $25,760, which left $54,740 as the appraised value of the structure. And then figure the total taxes on that for 2019 are approximately $883.52 on the structure part of it. And it was unusable for 60% of the year, so the most equitable abatement, what's been done on these in the past, it would be $530.11.
Which would leave approximately $350 that they would still owe. Is that my correct?
Yes.
Sounds like a reasonable conclusion and decision to me. Other questions or comments from commissioners?
Does this need a motion? Or is it just?
We do.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we abate the property taxes on the structure at 430 East Cloud as determined by Shawn Robertson.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we take Mr. Robertson's recommendation of a 60% -- 60, is that, would that be an accurate number?
Yes.
For tax abatement on 430 East Cloud. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion does carry. We'll move on to item number three.
Construction manager at risk interview with J.E. Dunn, construction.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna hold you up just a second. And I want to thank you, and congratulations to J.E. Dunn, the Law Company and Turner Company, on being selected to participate in Celine County's process of selecting a construction manager at risk. As discussed during the request for qualifications phase, the purpose of this process is to secure a construction manager at risk for a potential jail project. Any significant infrastructure decision will be voted on by the city, the citizens of Celine County. I'm a tongue tied this morning here. On December 3rd, the Board of County Commissioners intent on selecting a firm to be part of the collaborative team along with Trainer HL to assist Celine County in evaluating multiple potential infrastructure options. At the end of the presentations today, the fees proposals from the firms will be opened and read aloud. The Board of Commissioners will evaluate the recommendation, or the request for qualification submissions, today's presentations, and answers to questions to select the best all-inclusive proposal. With that, I would like to turn it to Hannah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As previously identified, Celine County is considering multiple jail infrastructure options to combat an increasing inmate population. These options in no particular order or preference are a new booking and release center that would be off-site with remodeling of the existing jail. Option B would be a new booking and release center that would be onsite to also include remodeling our existing jail. Option C would be a new greenfield site, and option D is alternate options that have not yet been identified. It shall be emphasized that all of these options are being considered equally. The scope of the work of selection for the construction manager at risk is in part, but not limited to budgeting, cost estimating, scheduling, constructability reviews, and value engineering and studies. The post-construction services that would be after a successful passing of a bond referendum of the voters of Celine County would be, would also include, but also not limited to, the construction documents, bidding, pre-qualification of subcontractors, guaranteed maximum pricing, and assisting the control and management of the project in the best interests of Celine County. Each firm is going to be allowed a total of 45 minutes. The first 25 minutes will be for presentations from your firm, and then 20 minutes for question and answers between members of the jail committee as well as the Board of County Commissioners. I am going to be keeping some time, I'll alert you at 23 minutes, just so you can wrap up the presentation piece of it before we move on to the question and answer. And with that, I would like to introduce our first firm, and Mr. Mike Comer with J.E. Dunn.
Thank you, Hannah. We won't count that as time.
It's striking. Thank you. Are we ready to proceed? All right, well, thank you. Thanks to the commission, thanks to the jail committee, and thanks for the public for allowing us to be here today to talk a little more about this important project and talk a little more about J.E. Dunn. We understand that Celine County has an issue with jail overpopulation. We also know that you started a pre-trial program, which has been working well. We also understand that you're looking to change local policies and practices to help assist with decreasing the jail population. You know, one of the things that you also talked about is mental health and substance abuse, and how important that is to bring those services to the inmates. And we understand that there's a, there's a space requirement to do that. So, so part of this project is getting those services to the inmates as needed, and that's, you know, that'll be part of what we talked about today. At J.E. Dunn, we're problem solvers. And we're excited to bring our knowledge in the correction industry to Celine County and helping you resolve and make the best decisions going forward with the overpopulation of the jail facilities. We're more than builders, we're more than construction managers, but we're true partners, and we want to be a partner in this project. By hiring J.E. Dunn, you're going to get unparalleled experience. By hiring J.E. Dunn, you're going to get a company that excels in pre-construction. And by hiring J.E. Dunn, you're going to get a community partner. Before we go and dive into those three items and why, we'll do a quick, we'll do some introductions. Everybody on this team is a dedicated corrections and justice professional, building professional. We all have experience with CM at Risk, and we all have experience working with Trainer HL. So I'll start with myself. I'm Mike Comer. I'll be the principal in charge on the project. I'll be your main contact throughout the entire duration of the project, from award all the way through warranty. Currently, I'm working on the Lansing Correctional Facility with John Eisenlau and Trainer HL. To my right is Zach Smith. Zach will be the project manager for the project. Zach's also working with me out at Lansing. And, you know, one thing about Zach over the last two years is he really gets it, and he's a great communicator, and I think if you called his references, you'd find out that he always puts the client first. And so I'm confident that on this project, he will put Celine County number one. To his right is Tom Bartelli. Tom Bartelli is our lead cost estimator, our pre-con director. Tom has worked recently on three projects with Trainer HL. He also worked, was the pre-construction manager for Reno County and Williams County, which if you read our qualifications, those are two of the three projects that we highlighted. We pride ourselves at being really good at pre-construction, and Tom, you know, he's the guy, he's in the heart of it. He is the heart that makes the pre-construction effort work. And the better you are in the pre-construction side, the more success your project's going to have. And I'll tell you what, Tom is, he's the best in the business, and I'm happy to have him on this team. He almost assures success throughout the project. To his right is Andy Jones. Andy's the superintendent. As you all know, the superintendent is where the asphalt, where the rubber meets the road. And he's currently working on Johnson County Community, not Community College, sorry, Johnson County Courthouse, and that is also a project with Jeff Lane and Trainer HL. You know, one thing about Andy is, you'll see he's passionate, he's very passionate about his work. And what does that mean for the people of Celine County and the commission? It means you're going to have a superintendent that's going to come to the job site every day, every day with that passion, and he's going to pass that down to everybody working on the job site. He's a great superintendent, highly qualified for this project. And to his right is Vance McMillan. Vance is our corrections expert, and even more important, Vance is our Kansas City Business Leader for our Corrections and Justice Group. Vance is bringing to the table more expertise in corrections. He's also bringing the relationships with the SEC and the DEC vendors, and we'll get a little more into that later in our presentation. But you have the commitment from J.E. Dunn, leadership's here, we're going to have all the resources we need to perform this project, to make it a success. And last but not least, Daniel Leroy, sitting back, back there, she's, she's the brains behind our presentation, keeping us all straight, and also helped out with the qualifications. And, you know, if we're selected and we have the opportunity to help with the pass the vote, you can see her helping with those efforts. So, that's our team. So going right into experience. Behind me, the slide there, I'm not going to read all the numbers. I think the data and the numbers really talk for themselves, but you look at corrections projects, check, we have that. You look at public project experience, check, we have that. Projects in Celine County, we got it. And then also projects with Trainer HL, we have that. I want to kind of dive into the Trainer discussion real quick. We did watch their presentation, I want to say, hiring Jeff Lane and hiring John Eisenlau is, I mean, that was a great move, because these guys really get it. They're great architects, we worked with them on many jobs. It was a good hire. So, when we watched their presentation, they talked about three projects, right? They talked about Reno County, they talked about Johnson County, and they talked about Green County. Those take you back to that day. Those are the three projects that they really highlighted. From all three of those jobs, we have representatives on this team. So what does that tell you? There's no learning curve. We've worked with Trainer, we get them, we're going to, you hire J.E. Dunn, we're going to come right in, we're going to start working.
Next slide, please.
All right, so, we showed you J.E. Dunn's experience as a company. I think it's even more important to show what's the experience of this team sitting in front of you today. If you look there, I'm not going to do the math, but it's over 100 years of construction experience. We all have corrections experience, and we all have experience working with Trainer. The other thing I wanted to talk about real quick is, we kind of dove in a little bit, showed you a stat on how many public jobs we have, but Zach and I are working on the Lansing Correctional Facility, that's a quasi-public job, and we really wanted to share some of our lessons learned and what made that project a success. So, Zach?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. As Mike said on the slide before, the 87 corrections projects speaks for itself, but also the 340-plus public projects that we've had, just in the last 10 years alone, really speaks to our, we understand the dynamics and the challenges of working with multiple stakeholders. Mike mentioned on Lansing, just for example, we have two designers on the project, there's two structural engineers, Core Civic is the main owner on the project, they have three project managers on the project. All three have greatly different ideas and views of how things should work. So, Mike Gato, the State House, or the state architect, his staff, and to the point where we've had, we've had three wardens on site now, so, with Sam Klein to Ron Baker, and now Shannon Myers is on site. So, we have a real good idea and a real good handle on how to deal with multiple stakeholders throughout this process. On Lansing, we were able to really get full buy-in from the start, from everybody. We laid out realistic but aggressive milestones on our design schedule, and we were able to take an extremely complex and large project from design all the way to groundbreaking in just over six months. So really, there's no way we could have done that without getting a full team buy-in on all of it. So we wanted to really emphasize that today, that we have a real good understanding of how to take multiple people, multiple parties that, sitting around the same table, and really get together as a team and get full buy-in and get from design to construction as efficient as we possibly can.
Thanks, Zach. All right, one more item to talk about under experience. Sorry for the language, fighting the cold. And this, we really think is a key differentiator from us and our competition, and that's the relationship with the SEC and DEC trade partners. Now, for those of you that don't know what that acronym is, Security Controls Detention Equipment Suppliers, very niche trade group. And Vance will tell a little more about our relationship there.
Sure. So I've had the pleasure to oversee the National Corrections Group for the last few years. My voice is a little bit torn, so I'm getting over cold too. Might come across.
Well, you're not coming across on the microphone if you could speak. Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll snuggle up here. But on this map behind me, this is what J.E. Dunn's currently tracking that's in the corrections market. These are projects that are talking about being built over the next few years. The relevance for you is, it shows you that the market is very active. I mean, there's $6.9 billion in leads that are out there. There's a few projects like Rikers and things that are mega projects that are $4 billion that I don't even have on here. Now, the relevance for you guys is, it's going to tie up all these specialty trade partners that really look at just corrections work. We talked about the SEC, we talked about the DEC. There's Old Castle Precast is another one that is, you know, really geared towards the Precast modules. If you go to the next slide, the last recession kind of hurt that market, because it was a very active market up until, you know, early 2000, and 2000, middle of the 2000s, it really dipped, and it kind of dried up. And there was a lot of companies that had put all their eggs in that basket. This is a map, it was all the security hollow metal manufacturers, and this is the security doors. There was 23 companies that were in business prior to the recession. There's four companies that made it through the recession. Now, I'm not going to tell you that with, you know, any demand, there's new companies that are starting, but what I'm trying to tell you is, you need to make sure you hire a construction manager that knows these people and has the relationships with these people. What is it going to do for you guys? It's going to, one, it's going to help them. Our communication, our relationship with them is, we're going to let you know this project's in the queue, so they can prepare for it, and they can allocate their manpower and plan for it. We've got three letters up here, and we kind of blew up some excerpts, and for the commission, they're on the back of the placemat that we gave you. I'm not going to sit here and read all of them, but what I'm trying to convey to you is, read the letters. You know, J.E. Dunn's going to come in here and tell you about how we're the best contractor, but this is actually from these security electronics, these specialty trade partners, and read what they have to say about J.E. Dunn. J.E. Dunn's about building partnerships, and you're going to hear that word quite a bit today. We're here to be your advocate, your number one, and put your goals ahead of everybody else's. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Thanks, Vance. I think we did a good job of showing the depth of our experience. So let's move on to item number two, which is very important, which is the pre-construction phase.
Thanks, Mike. So, what I want to do is take a minute to just walk you through our pre-construction process. There are really four main steps in our process, but we really see the pre-construction phase of this job breaking down into two main components. The first component being the pre-bond phase, and the second component being the post-bond phase. We understand that there are three options that are defined right now, and maybe a fourth or more that are yet to be determined. We know that in order to move forward, you need accurate pricing on those three options, plus whatever options that we work together with you and Trainer to develop, to kind of fill in that fourth option, or if there's more. And the reason you need that accurate pricing is because, one, you need to pick the right option to pursue. What option are we going to spend our time and energy designing and going towards a path that we're actually going to build? But also, you need to set a bond amount that's going to be accurate, that you can count on, so that once that bond is approved, there's enough money in the coffers to actually go build the job, without getting over excessive on what we set aside for this job. You want to be a good steward of the community's money. Lastly, you need that information to be accurate, but we don't want to, and I'm sure you don't want to, spend any more time, money, or energy developing design solutions for four or five options than you have to. You want to invest your money in the actual project that you're going to build. The great thing about J.E. Dunn is we are very tailored towards being able to provide complete, accurate pricing from very minimal design information, and we're going to talk, talk you through how we do that. So the first step in our process is defining success. And what that really means is getting together with you to make sure that we understand what a successful project outcome looks like for you. And we've got a bit of an idea of what that looks like based on the RFQ, but we really need to have some face-to-face meetings and talk about it. So we would get together with all the stakeholders from the county, as well as with Trainer HL, and then the stakeholders from our side of the equation, to make sure that we truly understand. And to give you an example of that, on the Green County project that we're working on right now, as we started to meet with them, the first thing we figured out was, for them, maximizing bed count was a really big deal. So that's where we focused a lot of our effort. We understand that may not be the right solution for Celine, right? So we need to understand, not just what does success look like to you, but also prioritize what are the most important things, so that we can make sure we're offering options to you and the design team that are really going to maximize value for Celine County. So once we've defined what success looks like, and we understand your priorities, the second step is setting a target value. This really goes back to making sure that we have that right budget amount for that bond, so that you have a number that you can live with from the time we go get that bond money approved, all the way through the end of the project. So, on the screen, there's the start of the four steps, and the first two steps that are highlighted up there are really the steps that we'd be using in the pre-bond phase, and I talked a little bit about those. To the right of that, you'll see a couple of icons, Lens Search and Lens Aim. So Lens is our estimating and pre-construction technology platform. It's something built by us specifically to support the process that we use. It's proprietary to us, we're the only ones who have it, and it's really, makes our job a whole lot easier. So Lens Search really boils down to, it's our cost history from all the past projects. So Mike started off by telling you about our experience, over 80 justice projects. When we do a project, we track very detailed cost history on those projects by division and section, so that at a snapshot, as we evaluate the options, we can very quickly say, hey, this option ought to be in the range of, you know, so many million dollars. We're not wasting a lot of time evaluating an option that's really not on the table, so that gets us started faster. The second tool, Lens Aim. So Lens Aim is essentially our estimating platform, but it's way more than that. It's a very dynamic tool. It's preloaded with over 14,000 engineering calculations, as well as best practices and our experience. And what that means is, if we get a very conceptual plan from Trainer HL, a floor plan, a footprint, sometimes maybe just a description, we can start loading in parameters into Lens Aim that's going to create a very detailed, accurate, complete estimate, so you can know that you've got a complete reflection of what the actual project cost is going to be, without spending a lot of time and energy developing very detailed design documents. So, what does all this mean to you? It means that you're going to have an accurate number at bond cost at the time you decide to go out for bond, as well as the right information to make an informed decision about which project to pursue. And hopefully, all of that sounds good to you, but you're probably wondering, well, how do I know that's true? So the proof is in the numbers. So, on the screen, there's three projects that are a reflection of what we've, what we've done in the past. And the numbers in gray here represent the first estimate that we did on those projects. So the very first concept estimate, usually off of a very simple floor plan, and the number in gray represents the final number that we had at GMP, so when we finalized the guaranteed maximum price with that client. You can see off to the right, we're within 1%. Now, that's pretty aggressive even by my standards, but we say consistently we'll be within plus or minus 2%. And if you look at Reno County, in reality, that number went up to like 21.5, and that's because Reno County didn't really trust that we could be that accurate. They held a little fluff back, and when we got to that number right there, they said, you know what, we'd like to invest a little bit more money, because we have some set aside for a little bit nicer roof. So again, it's about maximizing value for you, and we're going to deliver that for you on this project. So once we get that target value set, and we've approved the bond, we're going to move into that post-bond phase of the pre-construction effort. And this is where we really shift gears, and it's all about maximizing value. So, when I say maximizing value, we told you in the proposal that we would be able to save you between 2% and 4% over our competitors. And what that means is, by working smarter, by implementing our process, using our tools and our experience, that's 2% to 4% that you're going to save over what the competitors would deliver, that you can reinvest in the project, again, maximizing the value of what you're going to get for your dollars. So, how do we do that? The first step, the first step in this second phase, which is really our third step in our process, is design optioneering. That's a fancy way of saying, we're going to evaluate options. So, we're going to look at every major system on the job. That could be a structural system, a skin system, a mechanical system. Another system that's really important on this type of project would be your cell modules. We understand that since Trainer HL has been on board, there may be some members of the county who have gone and seen Old Castle's Precast Modular plant. So that's one of the options that you might be looking at for cell construction type. There's also a similar solution that's made out of steel. It's important to know, there's really only two major players in the Precast Modular field, and there's two major players in the Steel Modular field, and then there's also options for conventional construction. We have really good relationships with those vendors. So on the Green County project that we're working on right now, right out of the gate, we were able to quickly identify- county who have gone and seen Old Castle's precast modular plant. So that's one of the options that you might be looking at for cell construction type. There's also a similar solution that's made out of steel. It's important to know, there's really only two major players in the precast modular field and there's two major players in the steel modular field. And then there's also options for conventional construction. We have really good relationships with those vendors. So on the Green County project that we're working on right now, right out of the gate, we were able to quickly identify with the steel module suppliers, as Vance said earlier, the busy market and the limited number of players, they were not going to be able to produce the modules we needed at the time we were gonna need them for Green County. And the county wanted us to start looking very hard at precast modular solutions. Again, because of our knowledge of demand, relationships, what drives cost for those manufacturers, we were able to recommend an early bid package for that modular, precast modular package, as well as some parameters from a design that made that very efficient from a production perspective. And what that did is it saved them over a million dollars on the buy of that precast modular solution. So if you look at that on that job, that represents 0.8%. So that's just one example of how, understanding how the manufacturers work can save you money and that's going towards that 2 to 4% that we talked about. So that's how we maximize value. The fourth step in our process is continuous estimating. And I say that, but it's really a misnomer to say it's the fourth step because it's happening throughout the entire design process. The day we start working, we start doing continuous estimating. And what that means is as Trainer HL is designing documents, we're not waiting for our next deliverable package or something of that nature. We're on a weekly or even every two weeks saying, hey, give us a snapshot of what you've been working on. And hopefully, you know, we've been in the meetings, we understand where the design is going, and the purpose of that is we're able to review the design as it develops. And if something starts to veer off course, it's not in line with what we said your definition of success looks like, we raise the red flag and go, hey, it feels like we've gotten off course here. Was this a conscious choice or did it just happen? And if it's not something we want to be doing, we'll make the correction now. Same thing, if we see something starting to drive the cost up, we're gonna identify it and help you understand options to bring that cost back into line. And what all that means is at the end of the day, when we go to finalize that guaranteed maximum price, you're gonna have a number that's right in line with our budget, is right in line with the bond amount that you've set and gotten approved. So there's no, there's no doubts about the solution, you're going to have certainty of outcome. What I want to stress to you is all of this pre-construction process is leading up to a guaranteed maximum price. And the way we do that guaranteed maximum price is by going out and getting competitive bids from trade partners. So again, you're getting the best of both worlds. You're getting the maximized value in a design solution, but you're also getting a competitive buyout. And that's where Zach comes in and really helps me work, work together with getting that trade buyout done.
Yeah, and that's one thing I wanted to talk on here before we transition to our last point is sometimes there's a misconception, or we've seen a misconception in the past of by partnering with a, a single construction manager that you lose some of that competitive pricing. Really want to emphasize that after we get to, through pre-con, we are gonna go out on the street. We'll go out and bid this project, get as much local interest as we can to bid out each scope of work. The slide behind me shows, we have a lot of history that, that indicates and tracks very well that the more bidders we have for every scope of work, the better pricing you're gonna get. And the more competition that, that we have out there, the better pricing you're gonna get. At J. Dunn, we have a deep database of local and regional trade partners. And we'll use a variety of ways, I'll talk about it here in a minute, to get the word out, get it on the street, and ultimately maximize Saline County's dollars on the project. So that leads me into the last point of our presentation Mike mentioned earlier, is the community involvement. Want to emphasize that we have a full commitment of using local trades as much as we possibly can on the job. Again, this is a county project, this is the dollars that are being spent here, we want those dollars to stay home in Saline County. Past projects, we've used a variety of ways, we've, we've done town hall meetings to get the word out, we hold pre-bid meetings to talk to everybody about the project and, you know, what's entailed, local advertising, and then, you know, myself and other PMs will hop on the, on the phone and, and start calling trade partners around the area and tell them about the project, try to generate interest on this. Roger, you mentioned before the meeting, we're, we're no stranger here in Saline County. So we've been here before. We have a long history, we've had over 20 projects and used a lot of local companies out here and had a lot of success with it. The slide up here shows us an example of the Salina Regional Health Center. This map kind of shows our major trade partners on the job and really emphasizes the fact that we, we use local and regional trades almost solely to build that project. Again, just to emphasize, the, the dollars spent on this project, we really want them to stay home in the county. Once we get through our bid process, the, the commitment to the partnership and the county doesn't end there. We want to continue that partnership through construction and keep everybody engaged and informed. And Andy has a pretty good history of that and has a couple pretty cool examples of what he's done on, on past projects.
Communication during the construction, communication during the construction of the project is very important. We're doing this currently right now at Johnson County. It's something we put together on a Friday afternoon, take some pictures. So the architecture team, the sheriff, and the county, county administrator knows what happened on the project that week, and it's also used as a look ahead to, to understand what's coming up. Just a pretty neat tool that we put together, doesn't take very long and it keeps everybody This next slide here is something that Sheriff Henderson and I kind of put together. It was a Christian school there in Hutchinson that does a community project as a school for the community every year. He wanted to invite the kids out and, and do some work out at the project. So it made me a little nervous at first, but we put a pretty good plan together. The kids picked up trash for a couple hours and we took them through, the sheriff gave them a tour of the jail. I'm not sure what his objective was, but I got a pretty good idea. But anyway, brought them into the trailer, fed them a little snack and gave them the opportunity to ask about what the tradesmen were doing when they walked through the jail, how the jail was built, and, and just understand what was going on there. It was, it was a pretty neat deal, a lot of neat questions from the kids, so.
Thanks Andy. We still have one more item to talk about under community partnership, and that's how are we gonna help pass the vote. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Vance.
Sure. You know, Mike had mentioned earlier that we kind of watched Trainer's presentation and we're, you know, in lockstep with them, you know, it's truly, you know, it's, it always boils down to communication. Identify the problem, being transparent, open dialogue with your, with the commission, with the public, with the, the entire team. What we're pledging here today is, you know, we're gonna be a partner. We do this quite a bit with some of our public jobs or, you know, our school jobs in Kansas City. You know, that can be us showing up to the workshops, answering any questions that might come across on, about the construction. We can help with graphics, we can help with, you know, poster boards and whatever. So again, our pledge to you is truly to be your partner and help you go communicate to the, your constituents on the need and the reason for the, the bond.
Thanks Vance. Are we good on time?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, thank you. Well, I just want to thank everybody for allowing us to be here today. Hopefully we did a good job of explaining a little more about J. Dunn, let you understand that we understand where Saline County is and what your, your goals are for this project. So just to recap, three reasons why it's best to hire J. Dunn. Experience unparalleled. I think, you know, beyond the J. Dunn experience, but our team's experience, I don't think you're gonna see anyone else today that's gonna put this kind of team with this much experience in corrections in front of you. Pre-construction, you know, I hope everybody followed Tom because we had to put him on a leash, he could probably talk for three hours about everything you heard, but everybody would probably get lost, right? But what he does is important and it really sets the tone for the rest of the job. And then the community partnership. We understand this, you know, a big jail isn't probably or might not be what you need. Our gut job is to help you find the right job for Saline County, and that's what we're here for. I want to tell a really quick story about Lansing again. We sold shirts to the workers. We did it because we wanted to raise money for two not-for-profits that work at Lansing, Reaching Out From Within and Brothers in Blue Reentry. So we raised, we, we sold high-vis t-shirts to the workers and we raised $11,000. And on our topping out ceremony, we invited them to the job site, we fed everybody lunch, and we got to hand both these nonprofits a $5,500 check. And that's, that's truly the thing for me, that's what gets me up every day and makes me excited to do what I do, is to help others. And we really get helping the community, can't stress that enough. One last item we want to talk about, and Hannah, I know you mentioned it in the very beginning, but this project won't be awarded just on, on cost, right? So we understand you get it, you want the full package, the best value for Saline County. We stole this from Mr. Robertson and his report, so I hope he doesn't mind, but that, the spigot analogy, it's really showing the overall project cost, right? And the fees are up at the top, those two bars are the fees. It's just a small amount. And one-tenth difference here and there, you know, it might be $40,000 on your job, but hiring a contractor that can make an impact on the entire bucket of the job, you're talking millions, one to $2 million. We talked about that 2 to 4%. That's a million to $2 million on your job. So we ask that you consider that. And with that, you know, thank you for allowing us to be here, we're excited and we want to be your construction manager on this project. I think we're good to go to Q and A.
Thank you so much. We're gonna open it up for the commissioners for questions and I'll start with my questions. You're probably gonna think, have you been listening? Because you've already touched on every one of them really, and that shows this is really what it's all about. But your scope of services, how do you go about determining what, what your scope of services, the entire scope of services?
You know, it's, I guess it's, it's contractual, right? But it goes from pre-construction all the way through construction. I guess we could sit and give a list on the AIA and we, when we go through the contract, but it, it's really, it's whatever you need us to do to make the project success, successful. I mean Vance, do you want any other input on that?
I think that pretty well sums it up. Anything you need.
Yeah.
Okay, and then another question regarding local contractors that I had was, you know, how do you go about determining the number of local contractors that are brought on board? I mean, is it, is it, do you consider them, give them a little extra consideration as an example if they're a couple percent too high or something like that? Or do you, or do we get a, get an opportunity to weigh in on that? Or how, how do you go about that process?
You definitely do. And so what we'll do, Zach kind of alluded to it a little bit, is we'll put together the list of contractors that we're gonna go reach out to. Our goal is to have four to five trade partners bidding on each scope. The commission, whoever our contact person is on the project, they'll be able to review who those trade partners are that are gonna bid. And then when we get all the bids back, it's gonna be an open, transparent process to allow you guys to see it and we're gonna make recommendations on who we want to award to, but you'll definitely have a say in it.
Okay. The next question I have, may not be relevant in a way, I guess, but if you're selected, the amount of time that your, your crew or your, your principals here are, that you spend in Salina during this, particularly during the pre-construction part of it, do you spend much time here or can that be communicated through?
You know, I mean, it's a pretty simple answer to me. It's, I'm gonna spend as much time as I need to here. I know Zach will, I know Tom will. If we need to be down here for a week, three weeks in a row, we're, we're gonna do everything we can to make the project successful.
Also, and I know you touched on it, your participation in the pre-bond and the voting and, you know, the, how do you do that? Are you willing to participate in our town hall meetings? Do you guys, are you a part of that Trainer, Saline County, J. Dunn process, that team once it becomes that? Are you on board to do that or available to do that?
Yes, sir. We definitely want to be part of the Trainer's secret sauce. So, I mean Vance, do you want to add on anymore? But everything you said, we're more than willing to help with.
Exactly. And again, it's, like I said, there's a lot of times at the town halls that at the end, you know, maybe there's, you can almost turn it into a pre-bid meeting where if there's some local subcontractors or contractors that want to get educated about the project and how we're gonna go pursue it and, you know, your comment about the, how are we gonna tailor it for some of the local contractors? Sometimes we have to break it up in smaller bid packages for, to accommodate some of the local guys. So that's where a lot of that stuff can happen and a lot of the dialogue. So yes, we'll be here every time.
Like I said, I, I feel a little silly asking some of those questions, but I know you've touched on them, but in fairness, I feel like I need to ask these questions because I'm gonna ask them of the next two firms also. So how about comments or questions from the other commissioners?
I haven't been to any other jail besides Reno County, so it's not like I have all this experience, but it does seem that Reno County situation mirrors ours a little bit. The size, the cost. They also had their first bond election not passed, and then they got it passed when you guys were helping. What did you do different, you think, than the people did the first time to get that passed? Or what did Trainer do different? I mean, what was the, like you said, what was the secret sauce that got that passed the second time?
Well, it's our understanding that we did a much better job on the, you know, figuring out what the real problem is and it's, it comes back to that communication side of educating the public the need and it's not just, everybody wants to go spend taxpayer dollars, there's just a reason for the need. And then, you know, one of the neat things that Reno County did, and I would advise you guys to do the same, is they took the current issue and resolved the current issue, but also built in some expansion areas, capacities that you could expand at a later date. So again, that's a good check valve that allows you to take care of your current dollars and plan for the future.
I just, how, and not understanding really how this all works, but what is your motive or incentive as a construction manager to keep costs low and to save Saline County money without sacrificing quality?
We want your referral. We want more work. It's the right thing to do. We wouldn't be in business today if we didn't give our clients what they want and what they need.
J. Dunn's been in business since 1924 and, you know, one of the patriarchs, Bill Senior, Bill Dunn Senior would tell you today, the one thing we build better than buildings is our relationships and it's truly the relationship. You've heard relationship, you've heard partnership. It means much more to us that we walk away and we're all happy and we can call you, or you can call us if you've got another project, another lead. It's how, you stay in business for, we're getting close to 100 years, we haven't quite made it, but we're getting close.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? I'm not sure that you're aware, but we did have a, a jail population reduction committee that's been working on this project, at least for this commission, really in the last three years. And I mean, it's met regularly and several of those members are here today and I would like to call on Sheriff Solden or, or Mr. Robertson or Annie Grievous or, or Rita Deister if any one of them has any questions for the Dunn Corporation.
I have two.
Swing that comment over there, the microphone please. Under Sheriff Melander, I also neglected to mention him, so.
Just, just two, two quick questions. You talked a little bit about escalation and what the future looks like. You, you had a chart that I think it was 6.4 billion, it didn't have Rikers on there, you are correct, that's, that's at least that amount again. So, so what are you gonna do in the future to help minimize escalation? You talked a little bit about pre-bid, early bid packages, et cetera. Give me a little bit more about managing the future.
So you're right. I mean, the, the first step is you've got a plan for escalation. The one thing that I know from doing this for over 20 years is that it's going to be there, right? And nobody has a crystal ball, but we do have a very extensive sort of history that we track from past projects as well as what we look at the market on a, on a cost of things like fuel and steel and we even look at things like the tariffs and how that's gonna impact prices. So part of it is just predicting what do we think the escalation is likely to be on a quarterly basis and projecting out when will we start construction. The other thing that we do is we work hand in hand with you and Trainer to figure out how can we start this project as quickly as possible. We don't want to rush it so that we're not getting the right solution or cutting any corners, but how can we expedite it as quickly as possible? Because the sooner we start, the less escalation you're going to incur. So those are a couple of things that we do out of the gate. And then you also touched on another, which is what are strategies that we can do to lock in cost today? So early packages for precast modules, that was a good solution. But there's gonna be other elements of the job like steel. How can we work with our vendors so that we can say, all right, we've got you on board, let's lock in a price for the materials that you have today, even if they're not gonna deliver for six months, so we can maximize the value of your dollar. So those are all things that we do, and I'm sure there's more, but that's just kind of a snapshot of what we would do to attack that.
Okay. Second question. You spend a lot of time focusing on your relationship with Trainer as being positive and, and successful. What's the downside of having a close relationship with Trainer?
I don't think there is one.
Hannah, I'd agree with that statement. I mean, when you've worked together, I mean, it's almost you guys are, we'll be in lockstep, you know? I'd love to sit here and tell you that neither of our firms have any weaknesses, but I'd be unrealistic and it's nice to know. know when you have a partner that you've worked with that knows what things that you do well, and things that they do well, and that we can complement each other. We're working with them at Lansing, you know, and everything's been very smooth. I think J.E. Dunn tries to over-communicate by setting up regular meetings, and it's been very successful on the projects we've done with Trainer. Trainer does a very good job of creating, I'm going to say, three D images and some other things that are a little progressive that will help communicate to the commission and to the public on the intent on what you're going to build. Sometimes, that's a good way to minimize the dollars that might be put in mockups and some other things. But, I mean, that's just a few things that, where we work together to complement, that we think gives the client a better value.
So, you're still able to challenge each other when necessary?
Well, I'd be happy to let Jeff come up.
Well, Jeff said the downside is that you're always trying to give him the lunch bill, but I'll let you all work that out, so. Okay, thank you.
Are there any others heavy discussion when it comes to validating our budget? And there'll be a lot of dialogue that goes back and forth, but that is truly healthy.
Any other members of the committee wish to speak?
I just have one particular question. What was it that really attracted you to our project that made you guys submit your qualifications to us?
I'd be happy to take that one.
Thank you.
So, J.E. Dunn prides ourself on being a client-centered company. You are out here looking for a partner. You're looking for a CM at risk. You're not out here to buy a hard bid job that you don't know what you're going to get. You're picking on qualifications. Those are the jobs that we get up and we look for every day. We want to be a partner. I'm not going to tell you that we don't do bid work, but it typically puts us in a confrontational relationship with our clients. You've heard us say that it's all about building a relationship with our clients. It's hard to build a relationship when everybody's out there just to protect their own flank. When we're working for you, we're all working together.
I want to compliment you on your professionalism and your prepared presentation. We have a list of 13 questions here, that, potential interview questions. And I think that, in one fashion or another, that you touched on every one of them before we got a chance to ask you questions. So, wherever our, as we put these questions together, somebody must have tapped our, our meeting room or something, I guess, so. Any rate, thank you very much for your presentation, and we look forward to visiting with you again as this process goes forward. So, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Time-wise, Hannah, where are we at?
So, the next presentation isn't until 10:05. So, if you want to take probably about a 10-minute break.
Okay. At this time, we will take a short break, for any reason that you might want to take a break for.
Mr. Chair.
But not until we're done.
Not until we're all done.
Not until we're done.
Okay, gotcha.
We don't want, we don't want to lose all these.
I, you said that, and I'm thinking.
Next one.
You bet.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, and, what do I do with it? Thank you for participating, number one, on being selected to participate in Celine County's process of selecting a construction manager at risk. As discussed during the request for qualifications phase, the purpose of this process is to secure a construction manager at risk for a potential jail project. Any significant infrastructure decision will be voted on by the citizens of Celine County. December 3, a final decision will be made by the Board of County Commissioners on our intend, how we intend on selecting a firm to be a part of the collaborative team, along with Trainer HL, to assist Celine County in evaluating multiple potential infrastructure options. At the end of the presentations today, the fee proposals from the firms will be opened and read aloud. The Board of County Commissioners will evaluate the request for qualification submissions, today's presentations, and answers to questions to select the best all-inclusive proposal. Again, that will be on December the 3, that we will finalize that decision. And Hannah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as previously identified, Celine County is considering multiple jail infrastructure options to combat an increasing inmate population. These options, in no particular order or preference, are Option A, a new booking and release center that would be off-site with a remodeling of our current site. Option B is a new booking and release center that would be onsite, again with remodeling of our existing site. Option C is a greenfield site, and Option D is any alternate option that has not yet been identified. It shall be emphasized that all of these options are being considered equally. The scope of the work and selection of a construction manager at risk, in part, but is not limited to, in the pre-construction phase, budgeting, cost estimating, scheduling, constructibility reviews, and value engineering studies. The post-bond construction services, after a successful passing of a bond referendum by the voters of Celine County, will include, but also is not limited to, construction documents, bidding, pre-qualification of subcontractors, guaranteed maximum pricing, and assisting the control and the management of the project in the best interests of Celine County. Each, your form is going to be allotted 45 minutes, 25, the first 25 minutes for the presentation piece of it. I will be keeping time, and I'll notify you when you have about two minutes left, so that you can wrap up the presentation piece, before we move on to about a 20-minute question and answer section. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce to you our second firm, which is The Law Company, and Mr. Dennis Kirshen.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. First, I'd like to introduce the team we brought here today. I'm Dennis Kirshen. I'm the president of The Law Company. We're based out of Wichita, Kansas. Rob Davis will be the project manager if we're selected. Sean Grismore will handle all of our pre-construction efforts. Derek Dom's our chief estimator. He'll work hand in hand with Sean during that process. And then Terry Nguyen would be the superintendent, if we're selected, to be the, the construction manager, and, and once we go into construction phase. So, I think the first question you all probably have is, why, why select The Law Company as your construction manager? And we think the first, the first key reason is, we are a South Central Kansas contractor. This is, we, we consider this part of our extended home. We currently are working here. We have for numbers of years. You'll see a number of projects that we've done, multiples in the area. Why is that important? Because we also know the subcontractor base here. We've got relationships with subcontractors that have the potential to be part of this project, and have worked with them over a long, extended period of time. And we want to keep the dollars you spend on this project here in Salina. Second, this is a team of career Law Company employees. They are the best at what we do, and we are committing those people to be part of the team for your, your project. This is not just, this isn't a small project for us, where for some firms, it might just be, you know, just a little old project. This is a very significant project, and one we are bringing the best to bear for that. Pre-construction is a key component of this. As you talk, you've got three options. And, so that's going to be integral to help you navigate your way through this process and make really, really good decisions. And so that's what we're going to be here to do, and that's by preparing really good estimates, being a part of helping you design to a budget. That's a key element. It's not design, bid, and then, okay, now let's kind of figure out where we went wrong and go back. Nobody, nobody is successful when we do that. We have been successful in the last five years on a number of projects in that very same role. Kingman County, we're currently under construction, designing to a budget, and getting them what they need for that budget. That was a design-build process. Rooks County in Stockton, Kansas, we were brought on, helped them get into budget. And that project would have never got off the board had we not got involved in that one. And then the Renwick Schools that we're currently under construction on, in, in the Andale area in Wichita, is the same process. So, we've been very successful doing that. And then last, we're going to be a team-first member of your project. There's going to be a number of goals you have for this project. It's not our goals, it's the team goals that bring about success, and that's where we focus our efforts, is achieving the goals of the whole team, so that we bring the project to success. So, at this point, I've kind of given you a lot of oversight into what we think's important. I'm going to turn it over to Rob and let him tell you how we pull that all off.
Thanks, Dennis. So, if you're anything like me, you'd like to know a little bit about who you're doing business with. And, let me tell you a little bit about me and a couple of the guys that we've brought here today. Number one, I'm a Kansas native. I have born and raised here in Kansas. I've been here, I've been, resided in Wichita for the better part of 40 years, just outside Wichita, actually. And before that, I was in northeast Kansas. My wife can say the same, born and raised in the state of Kansas. We're happy to be raising our three children here in the state of Kansas as well. Again, it goes to what Dennis said, we are local people doing local work. I've got 23 years in the construction business, every single one of those years with The Law Company. I started my career in 1997 at the Sedgwick County Jail Expansion Project. And most recently, I'm the project manager for Kingman County Law Enforcement Center and Jail Expansion in Kingman County for Sheriff Hill. You've heard Dennis discuss our extensive experience in the market, as well as our connection to central Kansas. And you're going to hear more of that from the rest of us, because we believe it's integrally important to the success of your project. Probably more so than the other guys that you have coming in, or other folks that you have coming in here today to present, we do consider ourselves part of this community. You've got to be saying to yourselves, though, what good does that do for Celine County? What good does that do for our project? Well, certainly, we can rely on our past experiences. You heard Dennis mention a few of them, that being all the detention work that we've done, that's the Renwick School District, that's Kingman County, that's a whole lot of things play into that. But at this point, and this stage of this process, we'd really kind of be merely guessing at what you want and need most from us at this point. But I think it's important to tell you what we can provide for you. The benefits of who we are, if you will. And, and it kind of goes, it kind of goes in a sequential order, if you ask me. I like to keep things simple, start from the beginning, move through the end. And that's kind of the way we'll approach how the four of us do our work. So, first of all, my role as a project manager, what does that mean to you? Number one, it's a consistent, and it's a, it's a, my involvement throughout the process. And that really began day one, when I got an email from Dennis forwarding the RFQ from you guys that says, "This is our project." That's the day my involvement started, and my involvement will stop long after we hand you the keys, and long after the warranty period's done in support of the operation of your building. From a more specific standpoint, what does that look like as we move through this project from a pre-bond standpoint, the phase we're in right now? I'm a facilitator. My role is to bring our resources to bear for you, and, and to assist you in making, and vetting ideas, and making decisions based on those ideas as we move forward towards the bond referendum. Really, what that means to you, for me, is, I make myself available, I make our team available, and we are at your beck and call to provide the information that you need in order to present to the citizens of Celine County how this thing's going to pass. Right? Promote the work, get it passed, so we can go build it. From a post-bond standpoint, but still pre-construction, my role is, you know, helping Trainer, the guys at Trainer, and the, and the gals at Trainer, assisting the development of the design, use our resources, again, you know, with Terry, and Sean, and Derek, on, on our knowledge, our experiences, and how that can relate to the specific design elements of the project, how we can maximize the county's dollars and efficiency, how we can maximize or minimize, as you will, the schedule. Those types of issues, that begins with or includes constructibility reviews, those are official constructibility reviews. They're, they're not something we just say, "Yeah, it looks good to us on paper." It's a written report that we give to you. Here's our findings of the current design status of the job, so that we can sit down and talk about what they mean from a schedule standpoint, and from a budget standpoint. Speaking of budgeting, I'll manage the budgeting process from start to beginning, or start to finish, with the help of Sean and Derek, who you get to talk to here in just a minute. And then, as we complete the, what I'll call the post-bond, pre-construction phase, I'll be assisting Derek in getting big patches, bid packages, excuse me, put together out on the street, and getting those put together so that we can come to a final budget. And somewhere in that timeframe, depending on when your needs are, develop a GMP. Moving straight then into what real, the real meat and potatoes of this thing, which is the construction side of it, my role will change once again a little bit. My primary role is to support Terry in what he's doing in the construction of the project. I do that through purchasing, subcontracting, purchase orders, all those things, getting the materials, people, resources to the job on time, so that he can do what he does. I develop and maintain the critical path schedules, and we break those down into some components that we call three-week schedules, and look-aheads, and daily work plans. I manage all the costs, from the time that we go to contract or GMP, through the completion of the project. And as such, I'm responsible, I'm responsible to the building commission, the county, the citizens, to communicate with you the status of the project as far as schedule and cost. And I'm responsible in making sure that we're meeting those goals. So, that's enough about me, actually, honestly. I want to, I got the honor of kind of introducing a couple more of our guys that are involved in this project, on this team. Let's, let them talk to you a little bit about what they do, and what they're going to bring to this project. We're going to start with Sean. Again, he's our head of pre-construction for The Law Company. He's a Kansas native himself, his entire life. He's also a career LC employee. Keep track of these themes here as we go through this. Career LC employee. He has a ton of experience in our construction management at risk side of things through his pre-construction efforts. He was instrumental in helping Renwick School District pass their bond issue very recently, in the last year, and has, has done all the budgeting for, for that same effort. So, Sean, why don't you go ahead and, and kind of tell them what you do on a daily basis?
So, we view the, the pre-construction process as an integral part of any project, some more critical than others. You know, a jail complex is, is very complex. There's lots of parts and pieces that go into it to, to make the facility function. So, you know, with our, our past experience, we truly do know what a facility's supposed to look like. We know the parts and pieces that go into it to make it functioning, you know, and each end user has a little bit different way of, of functioning in their facility. Today, we don't know exactly what your facility's going to look like. That's where this kind of starts. We, we talk to, you know, the sheriff, you know, the county of, and the architect of, of what, what needs to go into this. You know, the other thing with, with your current project is, we don't really know where it's going yet. You know, you have your greenfield site for brand-new, you know, then there's the remodel options. All three options currently are, are very unique. They have their own challenges, and the pre-construction process is where we'll truly get into these challenges and figure out what the best direction is. So, as we develop plans, this is where the preliminary budgeting really starts taking place. Based on, on some very simple drawings, we'll start extrapolating and, and kind of putting some brackets around where we see this from a budget standpoint. With Rob, I'll help establish the basic starting schedule as well, to kind of figure out how we get from point A to point B to point C through the process of pre-construction. You know, there's lots of decisions to be made, lots of options, that we'll, we'll start going through. And this is where the, the budgeting really comes into effect. You know, you can't make an informed decision without knowing some of the costs. The other part is, knowing what these options do from a schedule standpoint. You know, there's lots of different items that pose different lead times. You know, HVAC systems vary greatly. So, depending on which direction you go, that can pose different costs and different schedule impacts. The other thing that we run into in the pre-construction is constructibility issues. Rooks County is a perfect example. You know, the original job bid is a hard bid, two different times. We were low above times, and then the county ended up going to a CM process, because of the, the hard bid process wasn't getting into budget. Once we went through that CM process, we were selected. One of the very first things I, I did, working on the budget, was to switch from pre-cast to masonry. It was out in western Kansas, so we were having to ship the panels. It was out in western Kansas, so we were having to ship the panels. But also out there, there wasn't a crane large enough to hoist any of it. So that was adding extra cost that wasn't really being accounted for. You know, when you, you think about it, the average jail, you know, some of them are pre-cast, others are masonry. It was just another way of looking at a project without creating any extra cost from the owner's standpoint of redrawing it. We were able to conceptually take the square footage and just change the materials on our end and confirm to the owner that, hey, this project does work financially. We provided the roadmap of how do we get there with the architect team. And that was through what we call conceptual estimating. Through the years, we've had quite a few owners not want to necessarily invest upfront on, on some full plan sets. We basically take minimal plans and extrapolate there. You know, we fill in the gaps of, of the scopes because with our previous experience and our sub background, we know what parts and pieces are needed to make the project It allows us to, you know, do more with less, basically. We don't need a full plan set to, to make sure we're on track on budget. We can start running different options and iterations. You know, with you guys, there's different number of options. You know, one's your green site, one's your remodel, you know, so those are two separate options. Then on top of that, you start going at each site of what are the building materials? What's going in this? How does this look? And we're able to run several options at the same time before we get too far in the plans because that's when you start spending money, as soon as you start putting stuff down on paper. You know, it's, our goal is to try to avoid missteps, you know, get one correct direction from the beginning. And the conceptual side allows us to make some assumptions, work on an accurate budget and a timely experience to get through the design process without missteps and trying to avoid the VE process if, if we can. You know, our, our latest bond work is, is Renwick Schools down near Wichita, like Dennis mentioned. We were there from step one, basically with the school board as soon as we were selected. We started developing an early budget as well as a construction schedule to where they can inform their constituents of what was really needed. You know, we were brought on before the vote, so we helped them through that process of providing the information they needed. We attended, you know, various meetings, be it town hall style of, you know, just informational in the community or more formal settings like this, you know, the school board meetings. We attended when we were needed as far as, you know, sometimes we were talking about budget or we were talking about schedule or, you know, the community had a need of more information on, from our end. You know, other times we were there just as a supportive role, just in case, you know, when it was open to the public, it was brought up. You know, we intend to do the same thing with you guys. Salina is only about an hour away from us. It's, it's really not an inconvenience or a, a problem for short notice if, if the need arises for, you know, somebody on the project team, be it myself or Rob or Derek or even Terry, if it's a construction issue, to, to be onsite as needed to really help you guys through and get, get this bond passed through the community. Another process in the pre-construction is the constructability reviews. We find it a vital process to get the whole team together in one spot and really study the drawings. You know, it'd be from the, the sheriff or myself or Rob or Terry. You know, everybody has a different viewpoint. Everybody has a different background of what they're really worried about or what they key on, on a plan set. You know, I'm going to be more cosh conscious of, well, you know, doing this adds this. You know, Rob would study it and say, hey, that's going to affect my schedule or, you know, that, that affects this part or piece. You know, Terry's going to look at a plan set and look at constructability a lot more than some. You know, how, how from a phasing does that go together? How do I really build that in place? But one of the most important peoples, you know, the end user, like the sheriff, he knows how his facility's going to operate, how he's going to bring people into booking and then off to the next step. You know, it's, it's critical to have his input upfront with the architects to make sure his facility functions as he wants his daily process to go. But I guess we just view it as a truly collaborative process. You know, without everybody is, as one, working as a team, the, the process truly doesn't work because somebody might not get what, you know, that something might be missing as the long and the short of it. As, you know, you've kind of heard our team experience, you know, everybody's worked on different jails at different aspects. Speaking from my department standpoint, currently every estimator we have that would be working on this actually has all bid at least one detention facility. You know, some have numerous more experience. Derek, for instance, has actually been in the field on, on more than one project. So he's seen both sides of it and I'll let him speak more to his background. My personal experience, you know, I, I mentioned Rooks developing the original budget. Kingman County is another one that, once we became involved, I developed the original budget. You know, it was one that started through a bond process that ended up failing one time. And then they brought us on and we really studied the, the programming and it helped kind of define what the county truly needed to kind of get it on track. And, you know, we went through the process and then proceeded on to construction and now we've started. But that's enough about me. I'll hand it off to Derek. You know, as the plans develop, it's, it's kind of how we truly hand off and he goes into the bid process.
My name's Derek Dom. I too was born in Kansas, grew up just north of here, actually. I've been with the law company, less than a month, I've been there 20 years. In that time, I've been an estimator, assistant superintendent, onsite project manager and filled a lot of roles. As of the summer of 2013, I've been the chief estimator. It's my responsibility to get sub participation and encourage the pricing from subcontractors. We're local to the Salina market. We've done a lot of projects up here and we can use that past experience and the relationships we have with local subcontractors to encourage the bidding from them. We have more than 100 local subs that we have experience with and solicited and we'll encourage all those that are willing and able to participate. There's a lot of subcontractors that can help fill roles that we'll need on this project. We also have a, as everybody has mentioned, we have a long history of detention contracts. I mentioned earlier, it's been mentioned that I was in the field. One of those projects was a 285-bed, 485,000 square foot juvenile detention facility, maximum security in Topeka. That history has allowed us to create relationships with over 80 detention subcontractors that provide that specialized equipment and furnishings. And we can draw upon their expertise as well to make sure we get the, the, the unique and specialized products that are required for your project. It also, understanding those unique requirements also allows us to right-size different scopes. And what that means is to get some of the bigger scopes that local or smaller subcontractors may not be able to typically do, like concrete. Typically, a jail's going to have a lot of concrete, elevated concrete, walls, pre-cast. But we can split those scopes up in, to smaller bite-sized chunks like the sidewalks or the site paving, basement slabs, all those different parts and pieces that could be performed separately, that we could help encourage local subcontractors to help fill those roles. We are able to self-perform some different scopes, masonry, concrete, carpentry specifically. We likely would not want to perform all those on this project, but that ability to self-perform those allows us to understand those scopes fully and evaluate the bids when we get them from subs and make sure that their price is accurate. You don't want a price that's way too high, just as bad as you don't want a price that's way too low. It allows us to evaluate it for reasonableness, completeness, and make sure that they're able to perform the work. Any scopes that we may want to self-perform, we would, in fairness and full transparency, put together our bid under sealed cover and submit it just like we would any other bid for, to be opened and evaluated with the ownership representation, just so that everybody can see what our price was in comparison to the sub bids. Once Sean gets done with his pre-construction portion of it and we have a full set of documents, like you mentioned, that's when I take it over for, and we'll send out invitations to bid, send out documents for subcontractors to bid the project. That will require us to call the subs, talk to them, make sure that they understand what that scope is. A project this big, a lot of times, some subcontractors will just pass on it just based on the size that they don't feel that they can handle it. So we do call those subcontractors, especially focusing on the local subcontractors here in Salina, to make sure that they understand what it is that we're looking for and to encourage them to submit bids and be, be involved in the project. We'll set a cutoff date and time to get those bids back from subcontractors. We'll value them, evaluate them to establish the best bid with the complete scope. At that point, we'll take that project, the estimated apartment, and turn it over to the project manager, Rob in this case, to start the buyout and he takes it from there.
And quite honestly, you've heard my spiel already, but I want to make sure Terry gets up here and, and tells you a little bit about how he manages his work. So Terry?
I've got about two minutes left, so.
He's efficient and quick at what he does.
I'll be very brief. I have 28 years' experience working for the law company. I'm a second generation law company employee. My father was a superintendent for 30 years for him as well. My relative experience, relative experience to relevant, excuse me, experience. I've done two jail projects, Sedgwick County Expansion back in 97 and El Dorado Prison in 2000. I've also worked at the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center with Trainer HL on two projects and worked closely with Ed Pape and John Green, the facilitators out there. A typical day for me is crazy. I'm the guy out there in the field pushing the work, but as long as we're pushing, have a plan and we're pushing that plan and we're measuring the progress, we're measuring, measuring the quality, measuring the safety, and then making adjustments to that plan and, and measuring those and, and then we can move forward. Time's short, so I'll, I'll, I'll close with this. I love what I do. I love to build. I love working with architects and engineers, owners and building end users, pushing the project home and I hope I can do that for you.
Thank you.
Thanks Terry. As, as Terry kind of concluded there, we really are excited to be here and, and be considered for this project. We, we really do mean what we say when we do feel like we are a local contractor, we work here. This is, this is an extension of our home. We do feel like, we understand the significance of this project for Salina County. It is going to be a very significant project for us as well. Not a project we're not capable of doing. We've done $100 million jobs, we've done $40 million jails, $50 million jails, numerous of those. So we are certainly experienced. This team has been involved in those. So you've got a local, well-qualified contractor that's used to working in Salina with Salina contractors. We feel that's very valuable in keeping the dollars here. You've got an experienced pre-construction team that knows how to help trainer, the sheriff, design and build the project you need and assist in getting that bond passed. And last, a team that believes in transparency and open communication with you as, as the owner so that we can bring the project to success. And at this point, I'd just like to open it up for questions of myself or anybody on our team. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, we have prepared a, a list of potential interview questions totaling 13 of them on this list. Most of them, if not all of them, you have already touched on. So pardon the redundancy here if, if there is such a thing, so. And my first question is regarding local contractors. And how do you bring those onboard and keep their prices in line? Do you give any preference to a, a percentage as an example? If someone from Kansas City has the concrete work for X dollars and the, a local guy is 1% or 2% higher than that, do you have a policy on how to handle that or what happens?
From our viewpoint, that's not a policy we can make. Our job is to, to make sure that we get opportunities for local subcontractors, get those bids in, and then evaluate those scopes to make sure the scopes are all apples to apples. At that point, we're going to present that to you before we make awards and say, here is, you know, the dollars, here's the manpower, here's the schedule. There's a lot of things that go into making a selection and it's not just cost. It's a capability of manpower, how long, you may have a subcontractor that's scheduled is twice as long as another one. Maybe that doesn't make a difference on a certain scope of work, maybe it does. So there's a lot of things that go into that, but as far as a preferential for, you know, this one or that one, we're going to evaluate it clearly on what the dollar is, transparently show you that scope and we're going to make those decisions together.
That kind of leads into my next question and that is your, your scope of services and how, how do you determine what those scope of services? How broad are they? I mean, is that something that we participate in or do you do that by yourselves and?
When you say, help me understand scope of services.
Well, I guess, the, the things that you prepare for us.
Oh, budgets and so on and so forth? So we'll have a regularly scheduled, so we'll, the way we look at this, and Sean kind of alluded to that, is first and foremost, we're going to work with, with Jeff and the sheriff and come up with programs for each one of your three options and give you an initial budget based on those. And that's going to be pretty broad, it's going to have a little more fluff in it than, than the final one will. But then regularly, as we get more information and we refine what, what goes into that, you know, maybe it's refined beds, maybe it's refined square footage, refined materials, at regular intervals, we're going to update that budget. And when we do, we'll compare that to the initial budget. And just like Terry talked about measuring when he gets out and does the work, he's going to plan and measure. We plan and measure in the pre-construction phase as well. So we're going to compare that, we're going to say, okay, where did we go up or down and why? And then how do we need to course correct? And we'll work hand in hand with Jeff on that and say, hey, we're, we're over budget here. And then also marry in those options that Sean talked about. You know, is it pre-cast? Is it masonry? What does that do to schedule? So those are kind of the things we'll do as scope of services and along with that schedule, schedule for design as well as construction.
You answered my question that I didn't know what I was asking, I think. Pre-bond and how do you participate in a pre-bond and, and help us with the vote and get this thing passed? And do you participate in the town hall meetings and so forth that we're, we're planning on doing?
You've heard a couple of us mention that already and, and to answer your question succinctly, we are at your beck and call. And it kind of goes off the, the answer that Dennis just gave you. You know, we're prepared to do these things continuously, start to finish. This isn't, we've included four trips for a meeting or we've included four budget updates. This is a continuous process. We're prepared from today through the, the passage of the bond, through the construction of the project to be a continuous. And if that means you need a budget update twice a week, we'll give you a budget update twice a week. As far as, as our participation in, in the bond referendum and, and the promoting of that that goes into it, I can tell you, between the five of us sitting up here, we will be available every step of the way. And if that's a, a weekly meeting or a every other day informational session, we'll make somebody available to be here to provide the support and information that's needed in order to, to inform the citizens and get this thing to a vote.
Okay, that's kind of what I want to hear because we have a very, a fairly broad group of very concerned citizens here in Salina that ask really detailed questions. And I'm not sure that, speaking for myself, that I'm going to be able to answer a lot of those questions. We're going to rely on trainer, we're going to rely on the, the construction manager to, to answer those questions. And these are some pretty sharp people that are probably, would easily trip me up, so I'm going to need some backing up, that's for sure. So that having been said, questions, comments from other commissioners?
All my questions have been answered already, so.
It's kind of the, they do such a great job on, on their proposals here that we're getting our questions answered. Jim, did you have something?
Quickly, historically, have, how have, as a CM at risk, have you been able to hit budget and you have a percentage that, that you come in at budget on past jobs or?
I can, I can.
Yeah, I think on everything, we don't, we do see them at risk, see them at risk work on select projects. On those projects that we've done that and we've, we have hit our budgets, we do also a lot of design-build work, which from my viewpoint is very, very similar. It's, we'll take on design responsibility as well. So it's really hand in hand, just like the CM at risk project. And I would say, we don't track it on a percentage basis, but we continue. And I would say, we don't track it on a percentage basis, but we continue, virtually all of that is repeat client work. And we've been working for some of those clients that we do design-build work for 50 years and you don't do that without hitting your budgets and your schedules.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a quick question here. In working with an architectural firm like Trainer, if during this process of looking at all of what they provide you to do a cost estimate and a plan, and everyone decides and you see another option that might be available, do you feel comfortable with calling up Trainer and say, hey, we might want to look at this and is this something that you've looked at? I mean, that's something I just.
So yes, I mean, open communication with the architects is vital. The other thing we've done on some of these, Renwick's a great example, is during the bid package, we'll actually create alternates. You know, so let's say the exterior was metal panel, but maybe the county really wanted brick. Well, we're able to work with Trainer and develop an add alternate to start with the cheaper material in the base bid and then track along the alternate as an add cost. So if the other numbers come down, we're able to go and make that switch without costing any more from Trainer's side of, we're able to basically have the option as we progress.
Yeah, I'd just add to that is, again, the key to these projects, especially on the CM at Risk side or design-build side, is that communication upfront because we're going to set the goals. There are certain things you've got to have for this project to be a success, right? You know, certain number of sales, certain booking areas. There's also some things that are maybe, you know, the exterior may be one. You know, you're going to have CMU walls or precast walls, but you may want brick or you may want stone or whatever, but they're not vital to the success of the project. So we identify those and say, Trainer, in our history of working with Jeff, we're absolutely comfortable working with him and saying, hey, can we, we think this is the less expensive option, let's create an add alternate. Or, hey, we really think from scheduling standpoint, we're moving into winter and we don't want to heat masonry. We think precast might be a better option because of timing, because we can go ahead and get that made in a plant, bring it in, so you've got a great option. And that's all driven by schedule, right? So there's all sorts of things we'll look at, and that's that open communication all the way through the process with Trainer, with the sheriff and with all of you of, hey, here's what we're thinking and why, and we think it's a viable option. But then let's look at it on cost side of things and schedule and let's all make a decision together. And that's how we think you move this thing forward.
Thank you. You may or may not be aware that we had a, have had a jail reduction committee that's been working on this project for three years, how to reduce our population in the jail and where this has all led us. And there are several members of that committee here right now, and I'd like to ask if any of those have any questions for the group, please. And Mr. Robertson?
You touched a lot on schedule, cost containment, bid alternates. Someone talk a little bit about escalation. The market's pretty active right now. There's a lot going on. There are certain bid packages that are going to be tight in terms of availability. What's your strategy for managing escalation as you go through the pre-construction services as well as the formal bidding process?
So from a pre-construction side of stuff, Dennis kind of touched on it. We start with maybe, fluff's probably not the most correct term, but the budget isn't 100% final GMP number. You know, our goal in the process is to work down. So we try to capture potential escalation costs upfront, you know, that way if the market does, you know, the steel tariffs, for instance, have been a challenge. But the other process that we're decently involved with our subs, you know, it's probably every day I'm talking to a different trade of, hey, what's the market doing? You know, what are the lumber futures? Not that you are a stick job, but you know, so we can forecast those costs to our owners. It doesn't do us any good if we're not reaching out to the market and seeing where the costs are going. It just can fluctuate and it's our job upfront from a pre-construction side to try and capture as many of those costs as we can. So as the process goes, we're working towards the lower number, you know, and a more accurate and tight number to go with a GMP with.
You had mentioned a couple of different projects that you have worked with Trainer on. Can you talk just a little bit more about that so I can get a better feel as to the experience and extent and scope of work that you've had with working with Trainer, please?
I have not worked with Jeff, but I worked with Dick Tillman, who's a principal, I believe, with you guys now, on the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center. And that wasn't a jail, but it was a large dormitory, multipurpose rooms, renovation of their existing facilities with, the students were present and we had to work around them. And we also did an 80-acre driver's training course for them, but we have not worked on a detention facility together at this time.
The only thing I'd add to that, and I hope I'm okay to do this, Jeff, but one of Jeff's associates, Mark Fairbanks, is also, we worked with him when he was with another firm on two of our very, very, very large detention projects. So I don't know if Mark will be involved in this project, but he, we consider him Trainer HL, and so if you extend that experience, working with Mark when he was with his previous company, we have a ton of experience working with Mark as well.
Okay, that, another follow-up question to that, you said very large detention projects. Can you kind of talk a little bit more about those? I did not see those as far as references in the qualifications.
They should have been. So you've got, I'm going to try and mention all these. Sedgwick County Jail was large, just, it was in 1997, so today's dollars would probably be in the $75 to $100 million project now. You can go to Larnard State Hospital was at the time in 2003, I believe, a $45 million project. It should be in our references. Larnard Juvenile was a little smaller than that. Topeka Juvenile was referenced as well. So all of those were significant projects. And Garden City Law Enforcement was, it was in the early 90s?
It was 1999.
99, and so I don't remember the size of that, but it was significant as well. $19 million at that point in time, so would be over, it would be double that today, easy.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other jail reduction committee members who wish to have a question or comment? We thank you for participating in this process. I'm glad you guys have all the experience because I don't in terms of doing this. I haven't built many jails in my life. So thank you for your participation and you'll be hearing from us for certain. And as Hannah had mentioned, we will be opening those bids today, but a decision, a final decision, won't be made until December the 3rd on who's going to be selected because we do have to talk about this among ourselves, obviously, and take care of the things that way. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So Mr. Chairman, our next presentation is at 10:55, so we have just a little bit of time to get set up.
Okay, we'll take a short break here until about the next eight minutes or so and do that. All right, it's 10:55 and we will get back to our business portion of our meeting here. Give you our introduction and congratulations to the Turner Group for being selected as one of the three finals to participate in Saline County's process of selecting a construction manager at risk. As discussed during the request for qualifications phase, the purpose of this process is to secure a construction manager at risk for a potential jail project. Any significant infrastructure decision will be voted on by the citizens of Saline County. December 3rd has been selected as the date for a final decision for the Board of Commissioners as they intend on selecting a firm to be part of the collaborative team along with Trainer HL to assist Saline County in evaluating multiple potential infrastructure options. At the end of the presentations today, the fee proposals from the firms will be opened and read aloud. The Board of Commissioners will evaluate the request for qualification submissions, today's presentations, and answers to questions to select the best all-inclusive proposal. Again, that would, that date will be December the 3rd. At this time, I will turn it over to Hannah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As previously identified, Saline County is considering multiple jail infrastructure options to combat an increasing inmate population. These options in no particular order or preference are Option A, a new booking and release center that would be off-site with remodeling of our existing jail facility. Option B is a new booking and release center that would be onsite to also include remodeling our existing jail. Option C is a new greenfield site, and Option D is any alternative option that has not yet been identified. It shall be emphasized that any and all of these options are equally being considered. The scope of work that is selected for the construction manager at risk for the pre-bond services is in part but not limited to budgeting and cost estimating, scheduling, constructability reviews, and value engineering studies. The post-construction services that would be after a successful passing of a bond referendum by the voters of Saline County would include but not be limited to construction documents, bidding, pre-qualification of subcontractors, guaranteed maximum pricing, and assisting the control and management of the project in the best interests of Saline County. Today, you will have a total of 45 minutes, 25 minutes for the presentation piece of it. I will have a timer going and we'll notify you when you have about two minutes left so that you can wrap up any further last remarks or comments. And then before moving on to about a 20-minute question and answer session. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to introduce our last firm, Turner, and Mr. Dave Dudzik.
And good morning. Kevin, are you, are you prepared to take care of this? You might want to.
Do we need an architect or engineer?
I think we need a construction manager, engineer type guy.
That's a great way to break the ice.
Well, I'm more embarrassed than you are. Kevin, can you assist in there at all?
There we go. I won't touch it. I'll just lean in.
Or you can use the podium if you wish, but.
All right, well, thanks for the opportunity to have us here today. We're excited about the opportunity to be your guys' partner on this, on this project. We know that this is a project that everyone is looking forward to, to get it passed here and get a new facility for Sheriff and his staff. So what we want to do is tell you our approach on how we are, look at your project and what sets us apart from our competition. We have our team introductions. Our staff collectively together has 107 years of combined experience. Many, many of those years is working on justice-type projects and they'll, the staff will tell you about their experience. Myself, Dave Dudzik, I'm the principal in charge. I'll be onsite on this project from the very beginning through pre-construction, all the way through ribbon cutting. And why I'm on this project is that I've worked on a lot of jail and justice-type projects in my career. And the knowledge and the things that I've learned from those projects is what I'm going to bring to this project.
Yeah, hi. Tim Collins, National Preconstruction Manager for Justice Work. I've been with Turner for 38 years. I started when I was 10. But anyway, my first criminal justice was the Atlanta City Detention Center back in 1983. Worked with John Eisenlau with Trainer HL, back on that job with my first jail job. I've had over a dozen and a half jail projects I've worked on. I'm currently just wrapping up a $60 million jail for Paulding County. The benefit of my experience is so the entire team can make good informed decisions early in the process.
Hi, I'm Nick Durand, the senior project manager on this job. Again, I've been with Turner for 11 years, done a lot of justice and criminal areas, courthouses combined. You know, I'll be here from day one just with Dave, so it sounds like maybe decision December 3rd to 4th, I'll be ready to go. So, looking forward to this one, very passionate about these kind of facilities and working for the Sheriff's Department with public safety. And the other thing is I've had a lot of experience with this type of approach where we go through a bond vote and being involved on day one of that's very important. So we need that to be successful and I think that's definitely what I'll bring to the table up at the beginning.
Good morning, I'm Kevin Rossen, a lead cost estimator. Been with Turner for 21 years. My primary responsibility is to leverage our historical cost data on similar buildings and provide the multiple detailed estimates required on this project to help the project team develop the best solution for the county.
Good morning, I'm Brent Geis and I'll be the jail superintendent.
Brent, don't be afraid to swing that one, I hope it'll sit together.
I've got 11 years' industry experience, all with Turner, and five projects jail and justice-related, so ranging from, anywhere from smaller projects that house less than 100 inmates, all the way up to Bear County Adult Detention Center, which houses 3,600 inmates a night. So really enjoy working with the counties, working with the sheriff's team direct to turnover successful projects.
Thank you.
Well, from our perspective, we see that there are three key to success on this job. An experience as sophisticated construction manager. We are the largest justice builder in the U.S. and we bring those experiences from that work that we've done to these types of projects. And so we're the industry leader when it comes to building jails. Secondly, supporting the bond, that is going to be probably the most important thing on this project, is getting it passed. We have experience of working with other counties on that, and we'll talk a little bit more about what we plan to do to help you out on this project here. And then finally, selecting the right subcontractors, labor market, vendors, suppliers, our trade partners, because without them, we can't get this project built. So get the right ones onboard so it's on budget and on time. And we'll talk about that a little more in detail. As I said, we're the number one justice builder in the U.S. and is ranked by Engineering News Record. And since the year 2000, we've completed, we've completed 56 jails, over 15,000 beds. And each one of those projects has required some assistance in getting the bond referendum passed. 90% of the work that we do is construction manager at risk, and I commend you on selecting that sort of delivery method. We're very experienced in that, in that method of delivery of a project. And we feel that that is the most collaborative and teamwork-oriented way to deliver a project when, especially when you're going to a bond, trying to get the right options. We know we have three options right now. There may be 13 options once we get down to the end of this to get the right solution for the county here. So, our relevant justice experience that we have done, just a few I want to point out, the one you can't read to the far left is actually Douglas County Jail in Lawrence that we're building right now, working with Trainer Architects on that. Cass County Jail, again with Trainer. Jackson County Detention Center, downtown Kansas City, Missouri, just a sampling of projects that we have worked on. Trainer is your architect and we have a longstanding relationship with Trainer. We've worked with them on many, many projects with their group, Andy Pitts, I've just completed We've worked with them on many, many projects with their group, Andy Pitts, I've just completed Gardner Justice Facility for Gardner, Kansas. Johnson County Detention Center, which is listed as Second One New Century Adult Detention Center. I did that project myself, Nick and I, with Jeff Lane. North Patrol for the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, and then Paulding County Detention Center is getting completed right now, that Tim is working with John Eisenlau from Trainer right now. Now, Tim is going to go over our, what we feel is our road to success, some stopping points along the way that we feel are important to, to move this project to successful completion.
All right, thanks, Dave. So defining success, what does that mean? So the first thing we want to do, if we're so fortunate to get selected, is sit down with all the stakeholders, understanding what's important to everyone. Obviously, getting the bond referendum passed is extremely important, but going beyond that, what else is important? Far as what's the best option, we'll look at the three, four different options that Hannah brought up earlier. So, from, not only from a, our experience, but from the standpoint of what the current facility assessments are, what the current state of the mechanical, electrical systems are, et cetera, et cetera. To make sure that when we make decisions, we have defined that success, that we all are in agreement, including the public. So, as we move into the, the next phase of it is basically that right option, taking the factors like I just mentioned into play, and making sure that everybody's in alignment so when we get started, we're going towards the end goal of having a new, or renovated facility that the sheriff can best serve the public. Dave's going to talk a little bit about the bond information here a little bit, and at this time Kevin is going to kind of get into the pre-construction aspect, and then Brent will touch on construction.
I need to look at the screen, my apologies here.
No, no apologies.
As Tim mentioned, he already hit on point number one, and this is our wheel of pre-construction services, and that's the most important one, is defining the client value and success. Number two is to establish a project schedule. Sounds very simple, but it's very important to tie our pre-construction activities and our construction activities in critical decision dates like the vote for the bond. Number three, coordinating the scope and eliminating assumptions. This is essentially, you know, no gaps, no double-ups, investigate the unknowns. Number four, provide progressive estimating, early cost certainty. By progressive, I mean early and often. Early because we can make more of an impact with less effort earlier in the project. And then the cost certainty, I'm going to talk about that a little bit more here in a minute. Engaging the construction market means that as we're developing our estimate, instead of only using our historical costs, we always want to reach out to the companies that do this all the time, the various trades, and just test the waters and make sure the numbers are right, both local, regionally. Starting the quality assurance and the quality control process is item number six, and in pre-construction, that focus is constructability reviews. Drawing upon our years of experience helping the design team, looking at the project. Number seven, utilizing technology to prove our accuracy and understanding, this is, this is 3D modeling that we can use directly for estimate to improve our estimate, and also for planning, visualizing the project better. And then number eight, maintaining the budget. We're not just delivering an estimate and then stepping back. This is a continuous cycle, a continuous estimating cycle, to ensure that we are constantly maintaining the budget and staying on budget. And so by doing all this, we're planning your project by being a partner to you and your team. So I mentioned earlier the early cost certainty and our historical cost data, and this is an image of what that would look like. So this is seven similar jail projects, what we call a comp model study, comparable projects. Little hard to see on the left, but what we do is we break those down by building system or component, like exterior wall, or structure, or electrical. And then we can look at the cost for each of those systems for comparable projects. And then what we do is we total these projects by looking and adjust them for location and time, because these are in other cities and were built in different times. And there are factors for that we use to adjust in the present-day Salina area, and then we put a forecasted escalation on that. Right now, the forecasted project start is the first quarter of 2021. So it's important when we're doing, and we'll do this in every one of our estimates, we're always going to make sure we have the right number escalated for when the project will be procured, because that's, it's a prediction of the market price. So in this case, right now, it's first quarter 2021, and that's that bottom blue line. And you can see there's a range of costs for these types of facilities, anywhere from maybe, you know, low $500 a gross square foot to, you know, just over $300 a gross square foot. And that variability is because of the specific program or use of the space, and, and, you know, like concentration of cells per square foot, and existing site conditions, all of these can impact the cost. So now what we do is we plot that data by system across the bottom, and then the vertical black lines on this graph represent the range of costs that we saw in each system on the other. So I'm going to pick exterior wall, for example. Right now, that's showing about $20 to about $50 a square foot. And the yellow diamonds are the average costs that we saw in that previous model. How we use this for your project is once we develop an estimate, and again, there's various options, each time, we will plot, that yellow diamond will be your estimate. And what we're doing is seeing how your project compares to these other similar projects. Is everything making sense? Is this where we expected it to be? Are we getting the best value? Are there other options that we can employ to provide a better value? And again, using our years of combined experience to do that, and looking at different systems and options is how we go about it. And I like to look at this like a, the old stereo equalizer, you might adjust to make the music sound right. That's what we're doing here. We're adjusting this until the music sounds right to you for your facility. And then Tim's going to talk about, I mentioned the, the construction options we look at as we go through this process, he's going to hone in on some cell type variety.
Yes, so there's basically four different cell types. In my experience, I've dealt with all four. You've got pre-cast and prefabricated steel are the longest lead time, but the most labor-effective onsite. You have less labor to put, put those in place. The modular steel panels and masonry, a lot more labor-intensive onsite, are quicker and easier to get. Once again, if you're doing a lot of labor onsite, a lot stricter quality control that you will need as opposed to prefabrication in a, in a manufacturing plant. They're all, when you factor all the different other construction around the cells, it really comes down to preference of the sheriff's office, which one is best suited. There's pros and cons to each one of them, so it really comes down to a preference to the sheriff's office.
Okay, so as we're moving on, one of the next step is, is on our roadmap was supporting the bond. And to us, this is extremely important. We have to educate the community on why a new jail is needed. I took the time here a couple of weeks ago to tour the existing jail with sheriff. The existing sightlines that officers have to watch inmates are not good. Where the, where the officers have their locker rooms and the break area is, they need something better than that. It helps with recruitment and getting staff to stay and new officers to come in. The jail does need some improvement, whether it's a renovation or a new building, something needs to be done, and we're helped, here to help promote that. We've got to educate the public, and what that means for us is there's going to be community meetings, we have to help answer questions and, and help educate them, and, not only with what the project is about, but with cost certainty, where Tim and Kevin are going to be working on those numbers and, and estimates, we're going to give real-time information and give it quickly so that there can be a quick turnaround on, if someone asks a question, "Well, what if we lowered the ceiling by a foot?", well, we can tell you what that does pretty quickly so we can respond to the public and get that interest out there, get their excitement, so ultimately they're voting for the project. So that's what we plan to do for you here. As we move into, once the project gets voted on and approved, we have to find the right subcontractor. So our next stop is sourcing the right labor market. We're a national contractor, we have 46 offices around the country. Our office that we would be running this project out of is in Alatham, Kansas, and we do these types of projects all over the country. And, and the point here is, is that your jail is going to need detention equipment contractors, those specialty markets. We do business with these folks all over the country, and they want to work with Turner. So if you look back, say, 10 years ago, there might have been six, eight different vendors in each specialty segment. The recession happened, and then a lot of them went out of business, to where there might have been six or eight. Now there's only two for a specialty type item. Because of that, the industry is so busy right now with work, you might not get the look that this job deserves if you don't use Turner. And why me by that is that these people want to work for us all over the country, and Tim or myself can call, pick up the phone and say, "Hey, we need you guys over at Titan Steel Door to look and give us a great price on this project." And they'll do it because they want to work with us. So we know those, those vendors, those suppliers, we're going to demand that they look at this job and demand they give us a good price on this project, and that's what we bring from our national buying power. From regional sourcing and local recruitment, Nick is going to talk about what our plan is moving forward with that.
Thanks, Dave. So down there on the bottom right-hand corner, I've already taken, you know, our interested bid list, you know, populated for people that do work here that we've worked with in the past in Salina. But more beyond that, and other than the people that have already called me and said, "Hey, I heard you guys are going after this job, I want to go do it again", we're going to have community outreaches. You guys have a pool of subcontractors here in Salina, and we, these outreaches, what we'll do is talk to them, find out what their capabilities are, find out what their interests are. Maybe they can't do the full masonry scope, but they can do a part and piece of it. Maybe we pair them up with our mason that is, can do the whole. So it's finding those right niches and then setting it up for success from the beginning. And you can only do that through, you know, outreaches, educate them on the bid packages. And unlike our competition, we don't self-perform anything, so when our subcontractors come and work for us, they know that our interest lies with them, and that gives really good market price, that we're sitting there going out to the full market, bidding every scope of work. The other piece, when we go into construction, really my responsibility is making this simple, you know, and for the client, and that's, you know, through transparency, open book approach, you know, we, we're the steward of your guys' money. You guys need to know where every dollar's getting spent. And we've done this, the way I like to do it is to create a project dashboard. Dejawn, go ahead and click into the dashboard. Communicating with you is the key, and if you guys, you know, have any questions, we're here for you. This is just an example of one that I've used before, and I, you know, I kind of carried it towards this project, that top ridge ribbon there. So you guys can tell me who gets access to this, it can be everybody that's sitting here in the room. You know, right there, we've got the budget up there, the key point there is right there on the right, the current savings. You know, I like to put that up there because the stakeholders need to know how much savings are we looking at right now and projected. There might be additional scope that at the beginning of this job, we say, "Well, that's not in the budget right now", but we want to know and track how much savings are we projected, and as we get through winter, let's say, and we taking care of all the winter risks, we might have some savings there that we can release back to you guys to go do that additional scope that we wanted to do. The schedule, you know, Brent's doing live updates on the schedule, weekly photos. We know you guys maybe not be able to get out there every day, but it's important to share with you guys, you know, what are we doing today, what's tomorrow? So Brent's going to tell you a little bit more about how we're going to construct this thing, but...
Well, good morning. Once again, I'm Brent Geis, and as like your boots-on-the-ground superintendent, building a building is actually really where my passion stands, and making sure that this is a building that not only the public, Sheriff's Department, Commissioners, all y'all are proud of in the future, and that I can drive down 20 years from now and show my kids, "Hey, this is, this is a building I built, this is one I'm really proud of." You know, with Turner being the number one justice builder, I believe we have the experience and wherewithal to build your project successfully. Of those 56 county projects that Turner's done jail-wise, you know, I've been involved in five of them, so let me show you how I'm kind of going to build it. You've got a couple bullet points on the right, and I want to really highlight on all of them, but two main points. Number one being communication, I believe that is the number one factor in a successful project. Not only working with the transition team from the Sheriff's Department, working with the Commissioners during the county meetings, making sure that y'all know where we're doing on a daily basis, and we also know what you're doing on a daily basis, so that way we don't hinder each other's operations. Because we know, especially with the, or the option where we're working in and around the fully operational facility, that is what we do not need to hinder at all, is we need to have a fully operational facility the whole time and make sure that we're working together as a team. With that, inside the fully operational, you know, making sure we're going through tool checks, background checks, make sure that we know what's going in the building during the renovation phases and whatnot, and make sure we know it's all coming back out, if it should be coming out, as well as who's going in your building, you know, via background checks and everything like that. Safety-wise is also a major component I want to hit on. Now, it's not only safety for the workers, but that's safety for the client, that's safety for our workers, and safety for the public as well. You know, you've got, we got a visual of kind of the aerial of the jail facility. You know, we all know that around it is a very public area as far as residential, so you can't really see it on the outline, but we kind of drew up a, a construction fence. You know, first thing to do is kind of fence that off, make sure that you have a safe area to work in, but also looking at truck deliveries, and how can we get in efficiently without disturbing the public streets around. We know that there's two areas that really need to stay operational for the sheriff's facility, that one being your salary port and one being your staff entrance, both of those being lifebloods to the sheriff's department and also the, the police department over there on the other side as well. So making sure that we keep those operational 100% of the time is a, is an important part. They're looking at some of the options, you know, we understand there's three, four options if another is desirable. You know, so we've got the new jail, we got a new booking and renovation, that one would be the offsite, and then we've got a, an addition plus renovation. So we kind of ordered those in, in order of complexity that we see and, and time schedules that we see doing this. Through, through experience with Tim, Dave, myself, all the whole team, we kind of put together some schedule timelines that we think, kind of rough estimates. So the new jail, we really think would take about 15 months or so. You know, you're looking at more of a greenfield site, you're looking at less unknowns, just overall easier build, easier in and out of the project. Once you get into the new booking or renovation, you're getting a little more complexity, we think we're looking more around 18 months or so. The reason why is you're now dealing with two different areas that you're working with at one time. You know, so you're coordinating different contractors, making sure that we have the right contractor on the left hand is talking to the right hand as well. And then the addition renovation, we're thinking it's probably going to be about 20 months or so, give or take. You know, with that one, you're starting to deal more inside of the existing facility as well, and so that is, you know, a very strict coordination effort and making sure that, you know, we're working with the sheriff's department to be able to get areas that we need to work in without displacing them too much. But that is one of the reasons why the renovations and the additions take a little bit longer, is because you do have some of those displacement issues that you're having to work around and making sure that we're working efficiently as a team. So really, what defines a successful project? And to me, that is day one, that the new building gets occupied or the addition gets occupied, and making sure that occupation goes over without a hitch, making sure that there's no issues. So how are we going to do that? Some early integration of the security electronics contractors, one thing that I see key. Now, what do I mean by that? It's really getting any electronics, touchscreens, any type of electronic locks in front of the SO to make sure that they're putting their hands on that screen, they're looking at sightlines, they're looking at the buttons that get pushed. That way, on day one, they're more comfortable with the system, and then we've kind of worked out any tweaks that would need to be worked out beforehand. One thing that we also like to do, as we're going into punch list and as we're kind of finalizing our project, is to make sure that the sheriff's department is actually test-driving the system. You're actually in the driver's seat, opening up doors to us, making us almost like the mock inmates. You know, so that way, day one, you know, you hit a door unlock instead of release all. You know, that's one of the last things we want, we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the system, right? One of the other items is BIM. Now, we usually use BIM in three different ways, safety, logistics, and also trade coordination. So those are three main aspects that we usually use BIM on. And then where I really get passionate about jails is the commissioning aspect. You know, we, we put up three different items up there, the smoke evac system. The picture on the right is actually a smoke test I was doing at Nolan County on a Saturday morning, Sunday morning. And what it is, we all know that it's really not the fires that might potentially kill inmates, but it's the smoke inhalation. So you really want to make sure that system is up to par and can evacuate that smoke within a timely manner to really make sure it gives everybody the best chance of survival. Another item on there is door frame checks. With security hardware, you have very tight tolerances, sometimes 16th of an inch, sometimes eighth of an inch, but very tight. So really... So really, starting those checks early on, right as you erect the frame first part, you do usually three or four different checks. One are after you set it, one when you're core of the way up, one when you're all the way up, and then one after you set the door, too. You know, so that way, you're just making sure you're constantly doing QAQC. QAQC starts from the beginning. And the last part I put up there is plumbing catches. Anybody who's been in or around a detention facility knows that inmates, prisoners, they'll do everything they can to kind of make life as difficult for the jailers, detention officers as possible. And one of the things I've seen in, in my past is that anything and everything can and will be flushed down the toilet. You're laughing, I know, you know exactly what I'm talking about, right? You know, so you'll see anything from shoes, socks, mattresses, clothing, you know, and it's all in an effort to try and flood the dayroom, to try and make them rehouse you, you know, to, in an effort to really make things more difficult. Well, it's our job to try and make things as easy as we can for you guys. You know, so plumbing catches is one of the things that we really like to look into and really like to test out that system, anywhere from even us flushing towels down the toilet, to make sure that it's going to catch. You know, so that's, that's one of the major things that we really like to focus on and one of the things that I think sets Turner apart from the rest. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave to, to finish this up. Thank you, guys.
Well, we felt like we jogged through our presentation here with the 25 minutes. But again, thanks for the opportunity. We feel that Turner's the right contractor for your project here. We've combined 107 years of experience. We've built a lot of these projects and the team you got here in front of you, that's a team that's going to be on the project. Supporting the bond, we're here to be a partner. It's going to be a big effort to do that and we're on board to do what it takes to, to help you with that. And then finally, finding the right trade partners. I know it's going to be a big point to, to keep dollars local, to spend and find vendors and suppliers here locally as best we can. And, and that's our goal is to not only do that, but find the best partners to get the job done on time and on budget for, for the county here. So with that, we are, we're done with our presentation. We'll open it up for questions. I know you have some.
Well, you've, as I stated to the other presenters, we had a list of potential interview questions prepared and you've pretty well hit on all of them. So any rate, we'll still ask you to elaborate on, on a few things and some others may have. How, how do you participate in the pre-bond vote and, you know, and participate in town hall meetings? Are you willing to do that, I assume?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, we feel that if we're selected, you're selecting us not just as a construction manager, but as a partner to help you get this, this, this project passed. And what that means to us is attending every town hall meeting, not only from how do you build it, but there's going to be material questions, schedule questions, cost questions when it comes to cost certainty. Kevin's going to be a huge part of that with Tim in regards to giving us accurate information so that, say, we're going to present, hey, how much does that desk cost that you're sitting at right there? Instead of saying, well, you know, it's going to cost, I don't know, a hundred bucks. It's, we're going to tell you exactly what it is for the, for the, providing it, installing it, and what that means. Well, you're going to get questions from the, from the public about, well, I don't like that it's brown. What if it was a white one? Would that be cheaper? And giving you that, that information so we can respond to the public in a way that we're educating them because we have to get the public on board and excited about this project so they'll check yes when they go to vote.
And, and, and that brings me to another part, and that is our, our local contractors, our local subs and things like that. As, as the selection process goes, has, how do you, is there a determining factor of when you can use a local and when you're going to go somewhere else?
Yeah, that's a good question. I want to have Nick respond to that because he will be leading that charge when it comes to community meetings and getting those subs involved.
Yeah, so we'll go through and talk about the bid packages that we'll have and then we'll, we'll see, you know, who's available here and what, and sit down with them and analyze their capacity and experience. What do they feel comfortable with? And help them work through that. Like I said earlier, if, there's no, to answer your question, there is no scope that we, you know, won't use local, other than detention, you know, some of the equipment has to come from suppliers and... But, you know, the other thing is too, is we've gone into communities and looked through the specs, it's gone as far as that, and make sure that we're not, you know, eliminating, maybe you have a local paint supplier that's not written into the spec. We'll work with Trainer to see if that's a viable option. And I've done that before, is include the material suppliers, too. But really going through and making sure at the beginning that they feel comfortable and we feel comfortable and it's a successful from the beginning. Maybe it's pairing them up with a larger contractor. Maybe they can't do the steel on the project, but they can do a couple handrails or the stairs. So it's really catering to what's out there and getting them involved.
That's pretty, that's pretty important to me as a commissioner because I want to use the local people as much as we can. And I know that our citizens want us to use the local people, but our citizens also want us to watch the dollars. And I like your comment, your, your analogy with the, with the steel handrails or something like that. There are things that can be done here in town and if that person that's selected to do the sub can use our people as much as they can, that, that's important to me as a commissioner and I think it would be to the citizens, too. Amount of time that you're going to spend in Salina in this pre-bond process, I assume is, as much as we need you?
Yeah.
I guess I'm answering the question for you.
My, my in-laws live over off of Ohio and Republic, so I've got a bedroom over there I can stay at.
Oh, boy. Here we go. Oh, that's funny. So I guess it's...
Whatever is needed from the county will be there. Again, we've done this with Trainer in the past. In fact, Jeff and I are trying to, we're working with Douglas County, Kansas, right now on, on, we've got a commission meeting here next week regarding cost. And, and it's, whatever it's necessary so that we can get that, that bond passed, those dollars appropriated and, and the, the construction moving forward. We're, we're here to support that 100%.
Okay. Are there other questions from commissioners or comments?
All of mine have been answered, so...
Oh, what a great presentation. Thank you very much. I, I do want to let you know that we had a jail population subcommittee that was put together, been about three years now that we've been working on this. And, and many of those people are here, just about all of them, I think. So if any of you have any questions, Mr. Robertson says, yes, he does have a question or two.
So give me your three biggest challenges for pre-construction services.
The biggest challenges, well, I'll start off with, and then let these guys answer, is, it's, it's going to be collaboration and teamwork. Tim talked earlier, defining what our goals are going to be. That is very important to define what, what we're trying to achieve. We understand that there are currently three options, but, but maybe there is another option that, that you may suggest, or maybe we have an idea from our previous experience working on other jail projects that we can bring to the table and say, hey, have you thought about this? That, that can help out. That's one is we got to define the success on that. I will say bond, but I'll let these guys go for it.
One of the biggest challenges we often face is getting through all the various options quickly enough. But as I mentioned, that's, we know that. So we, we know that going into this and we're prepared to put forth that extra effort early to get through those options, knowing again, it's probably going to be way more than three. I mean, it's going to be maybe three for each of the three. And so that's a lot of effort for us to go through those. And Jeff, I know, is smiling over there because we're doing this together, man, right? Yeah. So this is what we do together. We support the design effort and all of the various opinions and, and comments that we need to analyze. As Dave said, it's, it's everything, making sure we're explaining the how and why. Because not everyone understands this at the level of detail we do, and so we got to make sure we're breaking that down to a level that you're comfortable with, is what it amounts to.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Do you anticipate establishing a, a milestone schedule for pre-construction services where you need the involvement of the owner to make those critical decisions?
Go ahead. You want to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. I mean, that's, it's, it's the communication, the collaboration, and as we begin in the early phases of pre-construction, would, you know, highly recommend that we have regular meetings. And, you know, typically you get into a bi-weekly structured meeting, but be flexible enough if we need to have two meetings that week or a meeting once a week, you know, as we're making these decisions, that, that, what I, that's what I see that benefits the projects the most.
Okay. Just one quick question. You touched on facility transition, the involvement of the sheriff's office and other user agencies. At what point do you see them getting involved and maybe at different levels as the project goes forward? But when do you, when do you, when do you like to see that team getting engaged with your team?
Well, in all honesty, it's from, like, the construction effort is from day one. You know, part of what I mentioned was trying to get this security electronics in front of the sheriff's department as early as possible. Usually that's a two to three week review of some of that security electronics, touchscreens. But from what I've seen in the past, you know, usually the, the SO might put together a transition team, you know, so that way maybe it doesn't take up the sheriff's time, but, you know, we're working directly with some individuals that report up. Daily meetings is one of the things that we like to have. That way, we get to keep that constant communication together. As far as once we get into turnover, we'll probably look in maybe a month or so in advance of full turnover. That kind of gives some of the different jailers just opportunity to run the touchscreens, really to, to play with the buttons and really to help work out any bugs or tweaks that need to be happening in that system. So that's kind of what I'd say. But really, in all honesty, from day one, I'd like to be engaged fully.
Good. Thanks.
Other comments from committee?
I just would like to ask one simple question is what was it that attracted you to our project to submit your qualifications?
Yeah, well, and that's a great question is that, you know, we, our group here, I run our justice division for our, our office in, in Olathe. And we have a, an attraction towards doing those types of projects, not only detention, but PD, fire, courts, anything justice-related. We've, we've done a lot of those projects and we gravitate towards them because we're good at it and we like to do them. And, and we look at it as a, a way of giving back to those that help protect and serve our communities. We just like, we, we like to participate and be a part of that. And, and, you know, Salina is a nice community. I've been here many a times at the in-law's house and, and we thought it would be a great opportunity for us to be a partner with you. And that's kind of how that came about.
One final question for you, Dave. Do you have any experience fixing bulky microphones?
Yeah, I got some tools in the truck and we'll go down and patch it for you.
Usually we wait till the end to do the mic drop. We do at the beginning.
I'm going to, I'm going to talk to a couple of commissioners, of our commissioners that are even on the, the city-county building authority, see if we can do something about that, so. Anyway, that, that concludes then what we're talking with our, our, our people here. I do want to open it up for public comment or questions, and I want those comments and questions to be directed to the commission and not the, the companies that are providing information to us. So if you have any questions or comments, please come forward. State your name and, and address, please.
I'm Lanay Meyer. I'm from Salina. And, okay, since I can't direct to them, I'll put it out here and then you can ask them. Okay, the biggest thing in my, my interest and involvement in coming and listening is in the big, big picture, helping the inmates that are in our jails to lead a better life. And you know that by now. And so I want to find out if any of these agencies or these groups that have talked this morning have hired former inmates currently or if not open to looking at hiring inmates who are a good risk to do that as a way of advocating for them. And then also I'd like to find out, over and above this just being a job for them, and I've heard all three of them say that they're interested in justice work, is it, what's deeper, if there's anything deeper than it's just a job for us? What's their deepest, their deeper commitment to, to doing this kind of work? Is it related to caring and concern for the people that are in the jail? And also, one last thing, just wanted to ask all three groups, and I did ask one during break time, if their decisions they make and the work they do is totally unbiased are related to all three of the groups having worked with Trainer? But the decisions and recommendations they make be totally unbiased to the fact that they are connected to Trainer?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, just in fairness to the other two companies, do you think that this ought to be questions given to all three companies, that they come back with answers and we can make them public?
We can, we can do that. And I, I don't know if they were going to be here for the bid openings or not, but we are past that timeframe, so...
Certainly. Chairman, what we could do is have a supplemental list of questions that are sent to those other two firms along and provide them with an opportunity to answer those and respond to those appropriately, so that you guys can review that.
Sure.
And then we could open up, you know, if anybody's watching this on TV that has a question that they would like to ask, too.
And we can present those to them at a, at a, at a further date, so. Anyone else?
Joan Ratslove, Salina. I was wondering about our labor availability, what our, our level of that is locally and regionally, and how each of the companies might address that, you know, if we have some limited labor availability. And more specifically to that, where union halls used to act as sort of a labor referral. So I am curious about the three companies and their relationships with the labor unions that would provide skilled labor. So that's my first question. And my second question is more of, of an, you know, not exactly construction-related specifically, but my concern is that we are evolving from, you know, the whole correction system, we're evolving from housing criminals and, and, you know, what, what kind of offenders to becoming and, and making this project also partly, if not mostly, a facility to house mentally ill, you know, and people with, with drug addictions. And so it seems like that is becoming accepted, but I feel like it maybe is inappropriate. And if we could divert those populations from our correction system somehow, that would be preferable in my view. So, and my, my third and last question would be how our county would assure that the project oversight is being done to, to the best of the, of the county's interest? So, you know, if someone would be appointed from county staff to, to be that liaison?
Okay. Thank you.
Norman Manuel, Salina. There is a crystal ball out there and it's already being done. I'm sure most of you are aware of what Oklahoma's doing. So you better take that into consideration on building this facility. We won't need it.
All right. That having been said, we'll...
If I might, there's one other thing I had mentioned some months ago, and that is I was going, I was suggesting that the county board of commissioners lobby the state on doing what they can to reduce the state's pressure on our county, such as what Norm was... they can to reduce the state's pressure on our county, such as what Norm was referring to, allowing the state prisoners or inmates to be let go as appropriate. So, it would be something to lobby our governor for.
I will say that that is a process that goes through the Kansas Association of Counties that has a full-time lobbyist and person on staff, and all of, that represents all 105 counties in Kansas, and 105 counties that have a similar problem. And we do have those peoples on staff, and we just got back from the KAC meeting in Wichita last week, so those processes are being done through that organization.
All right, that's good to hear.
Obviously, Sling County, I don't think, at least I wouldn't vote for hiring a specific lobbyist for Sling County.
Oh, no, I just, yeah, no. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, if I might, yesterday we visited Johnson County Detention Center, and we walked through a couple large wings of it that were completely empty. They were all minimum security, and their problem was they were filling up their maximum and medium security. So, that told them that the people who need to be in jail are in jail, and that some of these programs are working because the minimum security people, those wings were vacant.
Okay, seeing no other questions from the public, I'll bring it back to the commission, and we will go to item number six.
Bid opening for construction manager at risk proposals with Hannah Stanbaugh, interim county administrator.
I will have the sheriff assist me so we can kind of, because he brought the knife.
Do we have any, are there other companies outside of my room?
I don't know, are there other companies out, are they waiting in the hall or anything like that? I don't think they are, but just, we can...
Thank you, Jeff.
The door's open. Public meeting.
Oh, well, then they got to leave.
We'll stand outside.
Go ahead, Hannah.
Okay, so this first one is from J. E. Dunn, and there's going to be a couple of different percentage pieces of it on here, so just have to bear with me, and we will be able to put all these together so we can see it in a big-picture standpoint. So, the, for J. E. Dunn, the pre-construction services fee percentage for option A, new booking and release center off-site would be 0.29%. Option B, which would be a new booking and release center and remodeling of this existing jail completely onsite, is the fee percentage of 0.33%. Option C of a new greenfield site is 0.19%. Says their pre-construction fee is based on three published estimates, one for each option, with ad alternates for increased bed scenarios prior to the bond referendum, and two additional published estimates post-bond referendum, and the single option selected in addition to the construction manager at risk pre-construction phase services identified in the section of the request for qualifications. The construction manager at risk construction fee, which would be the post-bond piece of it, percentage is 2.75%. This is a fee proposal, and the same for any project option that is selected. General conditions fee percentage ranges from 5% to 6%. This was something that was not specified specifically in the request for qualifications but put on for their services. And that one, is that them? We will have to compile all of this, so then it's a little bit easier for us to compare. The law company, the scope for pre-construction on option A, which is the new booking and release centered off-site remodeling of the existing jails, a flat fee of 85,000. Option B would be the new booking and release center and remodel of the jail all on the existing site, is a flat fee of 100,000. Option C, which would be the greenfield site, says a flat fee of 70,000. With the general conditions for option A, 1,963,000. Option B, 1,963,000. Option C, 1,197,000. Overhead and profit as percent of the cost of work, which would be the post-bond construction phase, option A is 3.5%. Option B, 3.5%. And then, last, with Turner Construction, pre-construction phase services, the pre-construction fee, flat fee of 58,000. General conditions, 4.95%. Overhead and profit, construction manager at risk fee, 2.25%. And that is it.
All right, thank you. My mind was jumping all over the place during those presentations, so obviously, we will have two weeks to, I believe it's about two weeks, for us to analyze and think about those things and consider what we've heard from each individual company. And that's about the size of it, as far as I can tell you, that we'll do a lot of number crunching and analyzing on where we need to head with this. So, that having been said, we'll move into the other business and announcements. I would like to announce that the majority of the commission, along with several department heads, attended the KAC meeting in Wichita this past week, and there were a lot of good projects that we could listen to and presentations that will help the county hopefully in the future. I also want to announce that the Kansas County Highway Association has named our county engineer, Justin Mater, they have named him the Kansas County Road Official of the Year, so congratulations to Justin, and he has been a great addition to our staff over the past 12 months or so that he's been here, so we're really happy to have him on board. Are there any other announcements from commissioners or anything to be brought before the commission before we adjourn? That having been said, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So, moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, we're adjourned. We will have a short second meeting with the administrators update, along with a executive session. Thank you for...